I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good evening, everybody. I have nothing under the court of the chairman, so we will move on to our consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve? Thank you, Nick. Do I have a second? Thank you, David. Do you want to discuss anything like the notification of the retirement job?
We have one notification for retirement here for Claude Janast. Claude has been a sergeant over at Stephanie for, I don't know, Bruce, how many, how long has Claude been at Stephanie? Claude Janast?
I think I read sixteen years.
Sixteen, last sixteen years. So we wish Claude he, that becomes official, I believe, in January. Congratulations to Claude.
Great, thank you. Anybody else have discussion? Yes, Nick?
I just want to thank our board for the pages and pages of minutes that we produce during budget season and all the work that goes into that. I think there's about fifteen pages of minutes on here that she's transcribed over the last two weeks, so that's a lot of good work. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on the consent agenda? All right, hearing none, all in favor? Great, thank you, motion passes. We will move on to our reports of our committees and liaisons. I don't see our MASC reps here. Are they not coming tonight, Steve?
I'm trying to get them through Zoom now because they're having trouble calling.
Gotcha.
Unless Liz is on, Liz was able to call last night.
Is any of our board reps on the telephone?
Yeah.
Oh.
Shannon?
No, board reps, not you, Shannon. The MASC kids.
Trying to pass herself off.
Let's see if I can get this.
Okay, we'll give them a second.
Sorry.
We'll give them patience.
Sue, Joe, are you there? They're coming on now.
Yeah.
All right. Are you ready to give your report? You're live.
Can you hear me?
You guys hear that?
Yep.
Yes, they can. Go ahead. You can unmute yourself and give your report.
I can start, I'll just start.
Go ahead, Melanie.
Evening, Board of Ed. Personally, full remote learning has been going very smoothly. I find that all my teachers have found ways to keep students engaged through online activities while learning remote. And the MASC Masked Singer will premiere on YouTube tomorrow on the 22nd at 7:00 PM, and it will showcase talented competitors competing for valuable prizes. And in addition, winter recess will begin this week with an early dismissal this Wednesday, the 23rd. MASC's toy and gift card drive will end tomorrow, and the benefits go to St. Vincent's Need Services in Trumbull. Also, MASC Orchestra will be releasing its video for the virtual concert on Wednesday, December 23rd, so be sure to look out for that on YouTube. Thank you.
Thank you.
Not much going on really right now, the virtual learning.
I'm personally looking forward to the Masked Singer dropping tomorrow.
Yeah.
My daughter was one of the judges and just keeping it very hush-hush, but I'm excited.
What, did they already sing?
They already sang, and I think the video is done, and they did the judging, and it drops tomorrow, but unfortunately, she was not giving up any intel to her old mom, so I'm looking forward to seeing that tomorrow.
Yeah, Ms. Letko did some editing. The contestants submitted their videos, and then there was a panel of judges that did some commentary in between the videos, and it was all put together for one show, so it should be, it should be very interesting. And the contestants are talented, I'll tell you that.
Are they? I'm excited to see that tomorrow night.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have any committee reports this evening that are not here? I know we had Finance Committee tonight, but I know that stuff is going to be covered later in the agenda, so we'll just wait until later to talk about that.
The Board of Finance meeting was canceled last week, and I think, believe, there's nothing now until the new year. Correct? Yeah, so I'll be at the, when would they start it? Begin in January, and then, of course, the first selectman will present his budget after we, early February, after we pass our budget along to him.
Perfect, thank you, Nick. All right, we were up to public participation, so Paul, if you can unmute, there's one person other than Shannon, right? Okay, great. Obviously, unless any of our staff has public participation here, I'll offer that first. All right, then we will move on to the phone for public participation. Excuse me. If anybody from the public, the one person wishes to speak, if you could please state your name and address for the record. Are they unmuted?
Hello?
Yes.
My name is Vicki Boschka. My address is 71 Ridge Dale Road in Monroe, Connecticut. First, I just want to thank you all for meeting and continuing to do what you're doing in the middle of this crazy time and the enormous amount of effort that's going into making the decisions to keep everybody safe in Monroe. We appreciate that. I asked if I could have a few minutes of your time today because there are some issues that I want to bring to your attention, and I just ask you to consider some things. And in order to do that, I'm going to speak pretty quickly. So one of the things I wanted to mention was that we've talked about the cost of special education now at several Board of Education meetings, and I just wanted to bring some thoughts again to your attention. First, we have an outside board attorney that I think is hired by the Board of Ed and presumably hired to ensure that Monroe follows state and federal special education laws. But this has not prevented Monroe from administration from violating those said laws. In several cases, the attorney attends every special education planning meeting for certain students, and violations still occur. It should be noted that the Office of Special Education Programs, OSEP, does not recommend that attorneys attend meetings, but Monroe, in Monroe, we routinely have attorneys at special education meetings even when parents are not being represented by attorneys. In fact, sometimes it forces parents to have to bring attorneys to the meetings. Some of the violations that we've experienced include the following. Let's say Monroe will say that they will conduct evaluations, and yet they do not conduct those evaluations. Now, I'm referring to significant delays between one and a half to three years, and I'm not referring to one evaluation. I have more than one special education student, and just between my two children, there were five evaluations that were not conducted when the PPTs determined that they were necessary for my students. Another issue is saying that they'll conduct, oh, I'm sorry, failing to provide the services that Monroe has already deemed necessary for the students. So it's already written in the IEP that, for example, a student should receive a certain amount of speech and language services, and then Monroe neglects to provide those services for almost two years. In special education, the school is legally required to follow the IEP for a student, and even with parent requests that the district do what they said that they would do, administration was not responsive. And then, here's where the cost comes in. The board attorney, who was at the PPTs when the decisions for the services were made in the first place, who was aware of the violations, then the board attorney gets in and steps and gets involved in order to prevent, I suppose, the board from being accountable for those actions. So this also drives up unnecessary, unnecessarily drives up those costs for special education. Another way that we have observed some of these costs being driven up is to avoid evaluations completely, which would fail to identify students' needs and therefore not provide the appropriate services for the student. In fact, while Monroe has a policy, I think it's policy 6159, which prevents retaliation against staff for recommending services for students or identifying a student's needs, we have been told that teachers will not make recommendations about students' needs at an official meeting. They would, of course, talk privately with us about needs, but not at a meeting officially. So they're aware that they're not to voice their concerns at meetings, so therefore students don't get the services that they need and the interventions at an early age, which is when they impact or when the most progress is made. And if they do eventually get the services, perhaps are identified by an outside evaluation that a parent might need to then conduct at a later year, it costs much more for the district to then remediate a student whose needs have been neglected for years. And of course, the cost to the student is also a great concern because years can pass by while students aren't getting their needs met, and of course, that affects them socially when they're behind their peers, and emotionally, the cost to their sense of self is all a big concern because they are not getting their needs identified at a young age. Finally, there is another practice that we wanted to bring to your attention. Monroe has a practice of putting students in expensive out-of-district placements that are not vetted. I'm not talking about placements that are vetted carefully. I'm talking about placements where students' needs aren't even being met. Placements don't have the services that are necessary for students, and therefore, not only does a student fail to make progress, but sometimes more harm is done to the student. And this costs an enormous amount of money, and there are various reasons why a district might do that, but we've seen that ourselves, that Monroe has done that. So these are some of the concerns we have, and one of the things that I wanted to just ask the board to consider is, we've seen an investigation with the superintendent, and we understand that there were issues prior to his being in office, and we agree with that. We've seen them ourselves, maybe not the same exact ones or the extent of the issues that the board has recognized, but we have seen issues. We also see issues continue to this day, so it isn't necessarily one person in one office that's responsible for some of the, some of the things that are going on in Monroe. So we would like to propose, again, we made this actually almost a year ago today, my husband and I asked the board to consider an investigation of special education practices. And again, we want to make that request again. We think it's necessary that an outside party, no one affiliated with Monroe, no one who knows the parties involved in making special education decisions, whether that be administration or even the Board of Ed, that someone neutral be brought in to take a look at the practices and some specific ways that not only are the federal and state laws being violated, but also, again, why we are spending sometimes an inordinate amount of money to cover up some of the things that are some of the practices that have been in violation of those laws. So I know there's no response, so I'm just going to leave it with that and just say thank you for your time. Thank you for listening, and I look forward to seeing what Monroe might do with this information.
Thank you. Is there anybody else on the call? Okay, thank you. So we will close public participation and move on to the report of the, and why does it keep saying "acting"?
I don't know.
Report of the superintendent.
I'll have to get that changed. I'm going to kick it over to Ron. I know we have some finance data to start with.
So the first thing I wanted to cover were the proposed budget transfers. I actually handed out a hard copy, which is a revised transcript from what was in the pack originally. There are actually three transfers on page one here. The first one is moving $10,000 from emergency building repairs to emergency vehicle repairs, and that was at the request of the new facilities director. He went through the vehicles before the start of the winter and basically has utilized his budget and just wanted money there just in case there's a problem over the winter. The second transfer is just moving a portion of the union president's salary over to union business, and that was, again, no, just a reallocation of the salary there. And that was with the movement in that position at the beginning, at the very beginning of the year. And the final was just correcting an error in the original budget. It was, there were three unfilled paraprofessional positions that were taken out of the budget, and they should have remained in the budget. They were unfilled at the time, and the position should have been budgeted for, and they were not. And they were moved from available funds in payroll adjustments to the Director of Finance position. So that's it with the budget amendments. I don't know if anyone has any questions. We'll be voting on those later in the meeting.
Anybody have questions? As Ron said, we'll be voting on this later in the agenda under New Business. All right.
All right, the second item is the review of the fund statement. Couple items I wanted to mention. The first, medical, I'm going to, is it okay if I jump out of order a little bit here?
Sure, do you want to go to the medical and dental?
Yeah, so the medical and dental, I just want to incorporate into the review of the fund statement. In the Finance Committee meeting, we, I handed out a, basically, a run of the medical and dental expense for the current year and projected it forward to the end of the fiscal year. Currently projecting that we're going to go $45,000 over budget in the medical insurance and $43,000 under budget in the dental insurance. So net at this point, I'm projecting we're going to be about $2,000 over budget. There's some, there's some guestimates in there, so that's, that's pretty close to break even based on a combined budget of about $8 million. So we're tracking pretty well there. So that was the, in the fund statement, again, those two accounts are showing that we're way over budget because we're, we've got the full payments to Anthem, our insurance carrier, encumbered, and the offset, the employee offset is not captured. The other thing, so the over, the amount that we're showing over budget in union business, again, that's being handled with the payroll transfer that I previously discussed. The COVID personnel line on page one and the supplies line on page two, which are both over budget, a good portion of those are getting moved to the, have already been moved in December to the grant fund and are being, will be captured by the coronavirus relief fund grant. And the other item I wanted to mention in the fund statement is the $567,000 in tuition private that we're over right now, and a large portion of that will be offset by the projected ECS grant of $508,000 that we're projecting to have for the current fiscal year. So that's pretty much it on the operating budget for the current fiscal year. I don't know if anyone has any other questions.
Anybody have questions for Ron on that? Anything, Ron, that jumps out that you think we could be facing?
Well, so, yeah, so the only, which we'll, we'll get into, Joe's going to speak on the food service next. I mean, that's the only, you know, concern off budget that could have an impact on the budget if we need to cover some of those costs.
Okay.
But again, as Joe will discuss, we're trying, trying to mitigate that as best as we can.
Yeah, I'll jump, I'll jump in there. So Donna, Ron, and I met with Sadekso on December 11th to discuss our current deficit. As I reported, I think it was at the last meeting, we had a deficit of about $146,000. Sadekso had talked about waiving some fees for us to the tune of about $28,000, and then also using some of our coronavirus relief funds to offset some additional expenses that they've incurred. So anything beyond what they would have budgeted for this year, they could write off, or we could write off to COVID. A lot of this is in the packaging of materials because of the, because of the format that we're in right now. You know, the food, you know, used to be on Styrofoam trays, now it's all kinds of paper products that had to be ordered to the tune of about $11,000. So we're hoping to be able to allocate that towards the coronavirus relief fund to put our deficit at about $107,000 right now. You know, Sadekso, when they met with us, they are, they agreed to be good partners, and they are, said they would, you know, provide some additional fee relief. They're going to eliminate all of our administrative fees at MASC, the MASC program off of the school lunch program, so they're going to eliminate those fees this year, so, you know, that's going to save us about $60,000. Not, again, this is separate of the 106 right now, but down the road, save us about $60,000. They changed the fee structure at the NSLP schools from being fixed, you know, fixed fees to a price per meal, to 64 cents per meal, so that has saved us to date about $11,000, and they project a possible savings over the course of the year of about $40,000 there. They're doing everything they can do right now to keep costs as low as possible. Right now, for, while we're out on remote instruction, they have one salaried employee working and one part-time hourly employee working, you know, getting, getting the lunches out. You know, really, what it comes down to, and we talked about this last time, but, you know, we talked about this more the other day, is, you know, the big initiative is to increase meal counts, to increase sales. Through November, we had averaged about 1,225 meals per day. Now, we have 3,000, you know, 3,200 kids in school right now, so, you know, that's way lower than would normally be the case, and that's, you know, what's led us to the current deficit that we're at. We met with them and said, listen, if we can find ways to drive meal participation up to a point of about 1,500 meals per day, that'll stem the deficit, that'll, that'll, that'll stop the bleeding, that'll keep the deficit where it is right now, you know, at $107,000. Going beyond that, if we can average 1,800 meals a day roughly, so about another 300 more meals, you know, starting in January, that only will stem the, stem the tide that we're at right now, that can erase the deficit by the end of the year. So we met and, you know, we had a lot of conversation about what are some ways we can get to encourage lunch counts. You know, I talked to Bill Bittar, who always does a great job covering all this stuff in our schools, and I emphasized how important it was for parents to realize that they're helping us out. If they get, if they participate in the lunch program, you know, they're, they're going to be helping us out. And, you know, anecdotal data, we're waiting to hear back, but I did, from what I understand, even today's lunch counts were, were higher than, than normal, which is good, but we have to do some others, some other things. If we stay in remote instruction, possibly do what some districts have done and use our transportation company to, not necessarily deliver meals to houses, but deliver them to parts of town where people can come. You know, the bus will be outside of Village Square for, you know, 11 to 12:30. If you live on that side of town, you can go over there and get your lunches. It might encourage more folks to get, to get lunches. The bigger one, and this is what some schools are doing, is if we come back in school, especially if we're in the hybrid, if we come back in a hybrid to some extent, at the NSLP schools, so all the schools besides MASC, you know, the kids, if they're in on Monday and Tuesday, when they leave on Tuesday, they take their meals home, and it's actually breakfast and lunch for Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. The kids who are in on Thursday and Friday, they take their meals home for technically what would be Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday. When you eat them is up to you, so if they want to eat them on Saturday, Sunday, and Monday, that's fine, too. But doing that just to drive the meal counts up and, you know, try to really attack that deficit. Dave also talked about varying, I know Dave, you had asked about this, and, you know, I think they heard this loud and clear, you know, adding some variation to the, to the lunches, providing some more hot meal choices, changing some ingredients, doing whatever they can to encourage, you know, participation. And they are also going to send out, I was talking to Alan Dean this afternoon, and they're going to send out a survey today to seek some feedback from, from families. What, you know, what can we do to help drive up participation? What are some other things that we can offer? I know it's been difficult for them in the remote, there's not, it kind of limits the choice, but they do say that there are, there are other options out there. So I think that was.
And that free lunches is continuing till the end of the school year?
Yes, yep.
The federal government is reimbursing, so the lunch is free to everybody.
Yeah.
And those numbers would include those free lunches?
All the lunches are free, so, yeah.
Yeah, but I'm saying, so, I'm sorry, how many lunches are we at right now?
Right now, we're at 1225. If we can get it to 1,500.
So we need, we need 300 or 400 more lunches, free lunches to go out the door.
Exactly, exactly.
And everybody's cleared that they, that they don't have to, like, qualify income-wise or whatever.
Yeah, and that's.
Everybody's qualified.
And that's what we got to do, too, is just keep marketing that piece of it, and that's why, you know, I started with, with the I am Monroe the other day to tell people, really, you're doing the community a service if you take the lunches.
And I expressed to Alan Dean, from a parent's perspective, and we talked about this in Finance Committee, I said to him, listen, I have two kids in the system. Neither one of them are going to eat this cold ham sandwich or the nut or butter and jelly. I'm not driving all the way up to Fawn Hollow.
To throw it out.
To pick up two sandwiches to throw it out in the garbage, so I just choose not to participate for that because it's, it's a waste to me, you know, so. So that's why I, we had talked very extensively at that meeting, you need to have some sort of other variety than it's ham one day, it's turkey another day, it's nut or butter another day, you know, it has to be something else because we're not going to be able to get people to want to go, whether it's driving there or going to a community pickup or anything for something that nobody's going to eat.
I think that's, I think that's the issue, Donna, because how, we're begging people to take free lunches and to order them, so it goes back to my question of, and exactly what you said about the quality, because my kids won't eat those two things either, so.
And we did talk, we did talk a lot about, at that meeting, about quality and stuff.
We're going to come up with a deficit because we can't give away free lunches.
And breakfast.
Yeah.
Good. I did sign up three families this weekend, including myself, my own, for the, for the lunches, but it's, honestly, I agree with what you guys are saying. It's not due to the quality of the lunches, it's more along the lines of understanding what it means to the district and wanting to help with that, so.
If it was the fried macaroni and cheese, that's a really, I don't know if they can do it hot like that, but that's really, really popular.
They did talk about having these sustainable meals where you, where you could bring it home, like a chicken nugget, and then be able to, like, heat it up or cook it.
Free eat it, yeah.
Somehow, so they did talk about that and stuff, and so they're going to, like Joe said, they're going to send out a survey, kind of getting feedback from parents, but they do have that type of stuff that they could start adding in.
It is, it is a first-world problem if we have free food that, you know, some people don't want to eat for sure, but if that is, you know, if that's what we're working with, I'm just thinking, I don't, if they could do the chicken nugget, fried, I think that's what it's called, right? Fried macaroni and cheese, that's like, you know, I don't know, if we could do those things somehow, I think we, I think everybody would drive to Fawn Hollow and pick it up, perhaps.
Yeah.
Anything else, Joe?
That was it.
Does anybody have any questions for Joe on any of that?
Would it be possible that, I mean, we have families driving there to throw out the food, to donate it, to?
The food pantry?
Or some sort of rescue mission that could take the food?
Just thinking about that.
I mean, literally.
Throw a hundred lunches in a van and bring them.
I was going to say, I mean, I can, I have time during the day, I can go pick up lunches. That's what I mean. I mean, we know that there are.
If you order a lunch and you go pick it up and then you drive it and donate it somewhere, that, you know, that's, I don't think that's a problem, they just want people ordering it and picking it up so that there's a, the federal government reimburses for a meal count. Because we can't just say, hey, we had, you know, 1,500 people pick up meals and it's really only 1,000, you know. So if somebody picks it up and drops stuff off, what you do with it after picking it up, that's your decision.
Have people sign up, I'll pick up the lunch, have someone pick up the lunch. In other words, parents say, my kid's getting lunch, I ordered the lunch, but we don't need it. And have someone pick it up and then we can potentially donate it. You know what I'm saying?
Could ask, yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I mean, that's all, I mean, I feel like instead of wasting it, we could, not that we're wasting it, we're doing it.
Unless you order it, they're not making it, so. There's no waste there, it's just that they're not, you know, they're just eating it.
Why is it, why is it reimbursement based on the physical lunch and not just like the number of students? Like, this is crazy, like, why?
I don't, that's a question I can't answer. Does anybody know the federal FDA?
That would be the USD, yeah.
Yeah, it's, the program is through them, so I'm not.
It just doesn't make sense that you're forcing people to go pick up a lunch, but the only way that Sodexo is getting reimbursed is if the actual food is in the person's hand?
Yes.
Why isn't it just reimbursement based on enrollment?
Enrollment doesn't always purchase lunch every day, it's not ever going to be based on enrollment.
It just seems like there's a flaw in the system, like what we're all, this is such a big flaw. I mean, it's the federal government, so, you know.
And again, this is a program we normally wouldn't qualify for.
Yeah.
I was going to bring that up too, this is an added for us, this isn't something.
Totally fine, it just doesn't seem logical to force people, the only way you're getting paid is if people go pick up food and throw it out.
Nick, it might be like a reimbursement, you know, where they have to show that they actually purchased X amount of so many pounds of food and then they get a reimbursement, I'm just guessing.
I think that's what Alan explained to us, I think that's what it is though. They're reimbursing us for the amount, yeah, that's what it is, yes.
But it's just a shame, it's a shame we have all this, you know, free offerings and no one's taking advantage of it. But again, it goes back to selection and quality.
Right, and I even asked because like I know like from my mom, because I had talked about this, well, my mom lives in New York City. So for like the local school, they just didn't provide free lunches for kids. Community people could go and pick up lunches, but unfortunately, that's programmed. Because I did bring that up, I was like, well, can we have community people who need a free lunch go and pick up that lunch? And they said, no, that the program I'm talking about is because she lives in New York City, it's an urban area, so they have different rules there and can offer it to, you know, community people. But here in Monroe, that would not qualify.
Yeah, anecdotally, anybody has mentioned, like, do you know that it's free and you don't have to qualify, like, it's free to everyone? It's their surprise, like, just, you know, talking to different people, they're always surprised. And I know Bill Bittar's done a great job putting it out there, and we've put it in our emails and stuff. I don't know how else to get it out there, even just so that people understand that every kid under 18 qualifies for free lunch, but, you know. So have you put it on our Facebook page?
I could do that, no, it hasn't gone on the Facebook yet.
With sort of like that headline, like, every kid under, I think I'm wording it properly, every child under 18 in the school system qualifies for a free lunch.
And breakfast, it's breakfast and lunch.
You know what it is, it's just such a crazy year and there's so much going on that I honestly think people are just missing the fact that, you know, you're so ingrained in your brain that whatever percent of Monroe normally doesn't qualify for the free lunch, that they probably still, most of those people just somehow rather aren't aware that they're qualifying now, we all are.
Yeah, and I mean, they could just ask their kids, like, if I ask my son, he's like, I don't want it. And for me to try to get out of the house just to pick up a lunch that he's going to throw out when I have to get to work, it's just unfortunate.
And that was my argument.
It's very, you know, it's not an easy just to go pick it up, knowing he's not going to eat it.
Right.
So if it's more appealing and it's worth, you could find both benefits, then I think maybe more people will be willing to do it. Jerry?
So if I have this right, it's, Ron, it's a maximum of 107 weight stands right now?
The deficit is 107 right now.
From now till June?
No, no.
I know, I need to say, I know this, so what's the projected? That was the question I was just asking.
So, you know, if we do without any mitigation, 356,000 is my estimate.
Yep, thank you.
So that's why it's important, we need to do a lot of this mitigation.
Now, some of the mitigations already happened.
Right.
With staff reductions and, you know.
Thanks, Ron.
Any other questions on this? So it sounds like we're going to have to try to promote this a lot better. And they also need to get better types of food that would be more appealing to.
To the kids that say, oh, yes.
Right, even if it's just a quick headline of everyone qualified, whatever, you know, of every child this age to this age in Monroe schools qualifies for a free lunch, that's something like that. I don't mean to be redundant, I'm sorry, but I just, I'm just surprised that many people don't know.
Well, when they were in school, the numbers were better.
And I agree with you, if we could do chicken nuggets, fried macaroni and cheese or whatever, maybe people would high sell it more out there.
Yeah, when they were in school, definitely.
Right, yeah, so I mean, that's.
Yeah, they're doing like less than probably 200 meals a day.
Right, exactly.
When they were out of school.
Yeah.
Getting in is going to be huge.
Joe, right now in remote, the principals are sending out weekly emails to the families?
Actually, it comes out from Jack and Tracy Coleman.
So is this added in those emails all the time, I would assume?
Oh, yeah.
It's pretty.
Well, I don't have a child anymore in the school, that's why I'm asking if. So I mean, right then and there, every parent should be reading from their child's principal, the newsletter coming out every week.
And we post that on Facebook as well.
Oh, and that's on Facebook also, okay, thanks.
Jerry, the principals have done a good job putting out that, you know, Sunday night email with.
Oh, no, and I agree, I just, I know how frustrated, living here my whole life, boy, I want to say I'm live and I know people are going to be so mad, we could tell Monroe there's a million dollars under a rock and five people would hear it. I know we're busy, I understand that, I know we all have things to do, I got it. Getting the word out in Monroe has always been very hard, I feel, I'm making an eye statement. And I love this town, it's just, it's hard to get the word out.
Well, it sounds like the word's going out, just for reasons Donna said, nobody's interested.
True, that's why I was asking about the newsletter, that's what I was trying to get to, yeah.
This was just last week, so. Could I add something before we move on? I don't think it's a quality issue, I think it's just a variety issue. I think the quality's okay, I can speak firsthand on that.
Yeah, Ron's daughter is getting the lunch for Ron, so Ron is consuming it.
She doesn't eat the entire lunch, I'll say that, she's going to be eater, you know.
So Ron can attest to.
Quality fine, yeah.
But that's important, that was an important statement.
All right. So everybody's good with that and well, we're going to have to keep up to date on this and watch this very closely. You know, obviously tomorrow really is the end and then it's going to have, it's going to pick up in January with, if we're remote, if we're hybrid, if we're in full. I mean, if we're in full, it's going to be a lot different, you know, so. All right, we will move on then to old business. Up first, we have four policies that are up for a second review and are vote anticipated. Do I have a motion to approve policies 4118.231, 4218.231, 3281, 3313, and 3293.1 as presented? Thank you, Jerry, thank you, Nick. Any discussion on those? Yes, Nick?
I just have, oh, I'm sorry. I just had one quick note on 3293.1, authorization of signature. I feel like there's a policy somewhere that actually specifies what the title, the job title of our business manager is, like Director of Finance, and I don't think it's Director of Financial and Management Services. So whatever they're like legit, the official title of the Director of Finance, it should just match the policy, that was it.
Okay.
Did you do that after the review?
No, I just saw it now.
I'm giving more.
All right, so you'll just make sure that that change, is everybody good with that, just making sure that matches?
Yeah.
Yes, Jack?
And if I may, I'd also like to recommend a small revision in Policy 4118.231, 4218.231, where we have the addition of the CBD product statement. I recommend for consistency sake and for clarity, I'd like to add the words "while in the workplace." So the sentence, the first sentence under CBD products would read, employees are prohibited from possessing or using any product with cannabis oil, CBD, while in the workplace, whether derived from, et cetera, et cetera.
Do I have a motion to add the words, amendy to add that, while in the workplace, do I have a motion? Thank you, George and Christine, as a second. Everybody good with amending and adding while in the workplace, all in favor? Great, thank you, motion passes, then we can go back to the original one. Any other questions? All right, hearing none, all in favor of approving those policies? Thank you, motion passes. We will move on to Item B, which is our budget workshop. Up this evening, we will be covering salaries, benefits and transportation.
I guess before we get started, thank you to folks that added some more questions in. We addressed a lot of those in the budget Q and A document, I don't know if you had a chance to look at these. I know, I could just make a couple of comments, number 24, number 28, were very similar questions about basically looking at, you know, redistricting. I think we have to get someone in here to take a look at that. It's easy to see right now that like you might have an issue in one school of one particular grade, but we could be, you know, we really need to have someone come in and do a real thorough study of that. That's a, it's a very tricky, very emotional item that, you know, we'd have to, we'd have to really do our due diligence. It's not as simple as, you know, if you make a one-year fix for something, you could be creating a five-year problem, so. We could look at that, and some of that was addressed in the Ad-Hoc Committee, especially the reallocation of grades and whatnot was looked at when the Ad-Hoc Committee met, you know, a few years back. You know, one of the, one of the difficult things about the, you know, having schools that are K-1, 2, another school is 3, 4, another school is, you know, 5, or whatever, you know, whatever, pre-K to 1, whatever, 2 to 4, 2 to 3 and 4 and 5. You know, you could quickly run up pretty expensive transportation charges because now those buses have to go all over town to feed to each of, to each of those schools. So I think that was, that was a potential problem back then. And then educationally, having kids transition, you know, the more transitions there you have for kids, you know, the worse off it is for kids. You want to try to avoid as many transitions as possible, you know, throughout their, throughout their year. So, you know, if you're having kids go to all five schools over a, you know, 12 or 13-year period, it's adding a lot of transitions in. Jeff?
Just one question. I had asked my question based off of the redistricting that Christine had asked about the buses. Since we're going into a renegotiation, is that, is that the next year or we're locked into them for the next year? I mean, could you tie the two together where we're looking at potentially redistricting? So when we do the, in other words, do we have enough time before we have to do the bus to look at a redistricting plan where we could mitigate in negotiation with the bus company?
Bus company.
Any potential, or build that in anyway to?
Get ahead of it.
Yeah, correct.
Make it part of the bid process.
Exactly.
We'd have to look into, we'd have to, like I said, that the whole idea of redistricting is.
Has it been done before?
I think it's been done in small amounts where like a street has moved, a street has moved here and there, or even in some cases.
I don't even know if we're technically, well, I guess it technically redistricted, I think, I don't even know.
Because you're.
We were stepping, and then Christopher went to Monroe L, and I think, I think, I don't know. I don't know if you ever officially redistricted that half of the street.
I mean, everyone, Fawn Hollow and Monroe L, we've taken one street.
Right.
And moved, never the whole thing, no.
Yeah, I think it's been.
I don't even know if we've had a study, a full study on it.
I don't, I mean.
They're not cheap.
Nine, eight years.
And they're long, Jeff, you're not going to have a study done in a few months, it's going to be a year, minimum.
When was the Ad-Hoc Committee done? Because it was during Jim's.
It was during Jim, I would say.
Because Malone and McBroom assisted with that.
Yeah.
I want to say seven, I think it was when I first came on the Board of Ed, so maybe seven years ago.
Probably not long after, you know, the closure of Chalk Hill.
Right.
Into Jim's tenure, yeah.
Right, and that was like a year-long study, it wasn't like a few months, like it was a whole year, I want to say.
I think when we signed with them, they wouldn't sign if it was less than a year. I think it takes them that for the research.
Well, it was whoever served on the committee, and I don't know if any of you guys, anybody here served on the committee, like they walked, the people who were on that committee, Jack shaking his head, they walked every single solitary inch of every single building, the Board of Ed, everybody who was on the Ad-Hoc Committee, there was Board of Ed members, administrators, right? Jack, you probably remember best.
I remember well.
But didn't that take like the better part of a year?
It did, and we were, and it was, there were very detailed examinations of all of the spaces in the building, in each of the school buildings as to what the different areas could be used for, what they were being used for and what they had the potential of being used for.
Do we have that somewhere?
We do, yep.
Sheila?
It's actually on the website, under the Board of Ed, 2015.
2015.
It says that the Ad-Hoc Committee, there's a whole bunch of it, so they're in it. Very long, but.
Right, but I want to say that was started well before 15.
Yeah, this looks like a compilation of the information that was being shared out, you can't find the original.
Oh, yeah, there it is, Ad-Hoc Study 2015.
I feel like it was earlier than that.
And I'm not sure.
I want to say it was earlier than that.
Help me how this will.
I feel like it was when I first came on.
And how will this help if we don't have a lot of extra rooms? And it just, help me refresh, the elementary schools might have a room, a room and two rooms. So what would redistricting do? It wouldn't take the load off, in other words. We have four empty rooms in three elementary schools.
But it could balance the averages of the rooms.
It could balance the averages.
Especially when like Monroe L District, I mean, I'll ask the realtors, but they don't have, like Monroe L District doesn't have a lot of new developments, right? But look at Fawn Hollow that has a lot and probably more to come. So that's when you have to start thinking about the schools and the housing development and how it all ties in together. At least that's my thought on it.
Right, and it wasn't just Malone and McBroom, it was also the Fletcher Thompson did the, did the facilities and facilities and demographic assessment, this is a, almost a 400-page document.
That's what I meant when I said they wouldn't sign on to it, Donna, they weren't going to be pressured to do it quick.
Right, and this was dated January 20 of 2015, so I want to say this probably started sometime in 2014.
Or 13.
2013.
Yeah, it was like seven years ago when I first, I think it was like one of the first things when I came on the board, this was starting to be in development.
Yes, it did.
But that's when, yeah, Chalk Hill closed, then they were talking about closing Monroe out, right, as a possibility and all that stuff.
There's a number of different configurations that were proposed.
Yeah, there's pictures of all the water distribution piping, I mean, this is like. Yeah, there's pictures of all the water distribution piping. I mean, this is like extremely detailed.
Yeah.
Layouts of buildings.
Well, Donna, face it, it's like, I mean, it's like adding another bedroom to your house, but not having the septic capacity to do it. It's the one, we just can't add a bedroom in our home and say, okay, we're fine. That's all you have to do is through town approval because that's to handle that. So that's the other problem we have with the schools, will they handle that?
Yeah, but to keep your analogy going, the people are coming to sleep. I mean, they're coming.
Yeah.
So, and to getting back to Jeff's point, that was kind of my.
I don't think, I think you guys better be very careful with the word. Redistricting causes a lot, just think about what you're doing, that's all. It's, it's not as easy as you guys think.
Be a lot of unhappy people.
There's going to be a lot of angry people, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm looking at this, like I'm just happened to pull up on one of these pages. Like it has the whole layout of MASC, and it, and it's in detail, what the room is used for, what are the square footage of the room, and each of the little boxes. I mean, this is, you know, pretty detailed.
Let me get back to Christine's point. Shannon and Jeff, when people move in, do they look for a certain elementary school? I mean, I'm being serious. Do they ask for Fawn Hollow?
They'll, they'll, they'll look at, in all honesty, I will get people looking at the scores of our schools. And they base their home search based on those scores.
And now we're talking about redistricting, and this is my whole issue.
I mean, all of our schools are the same.
Gotcha.
But, you know, but in different towns, they vary drastically.
They definitely are looking at schools, and it is, the score is like Jeff's saying, or it's just whatever, you know, experience they personally have had with a school that they, you know, tied, because they know that community and that school, and whether they're upsizing or downsizing, they want to stay in that school district and, you know. But right now, there's like two houses for sale in Monroe, but it is normal times, that's, that's the thing.
I mean, I think like it or not, I mean, redistricting or not, if we have another calendar year where we're adding fifty kids in elementary schools, I don't think we're having much of a choice.
No, you're right.
You know, it's something certainly we should be putting on our radar to plan.
Oh, we have to. You've got to think about it. It's just we're going to have to tread lightly.
Believe me, when I got the phone call, I, my, Christopher already went to Stepney.
Your blood pressure was?
I know. Elise already went there. I get a phone call saying, um, we need to move your child because there's too many kids at Stepney. I'm like, how do I explain to him all his friends are at one school and this and that? Now, I had a unique situation because my daughter is already in middle school, but still, you know, and I know that's a tough one because I couldn't have done it if having one in one school and one in the other. But that's like my thought process, are there streets? Like my street at the time was an easy redistrict because I was the only person on the street sending a child to elementary school. So if you redistricted that, now as new families are moving in, now they're already in Monroe. It's, it's a no-brainer. And you had two buses, talk about busing transportation, you had two buses for two different schools going up and down my street. So there's a, there's one, that's one of probably many examples that you could just even on a minor level start to think about. I'm not saying it's going to be huge, but baby steps.
There you go. I like that. There's nothing wrong with baby steps.
It might make a small difference. It might make a difference in a class instead of teetering on twenty-six. Maybe you're at twenty-three. Who knows?
And I think back to what Jeff was saying before too, is that, and I'm going to use this statistic throughout the rest of the budget that we do, but the projections that we got last year in November off of that study, our second grade is sixteen over the high projection, right now. That's real. Those are real numbers. They're here now. So we're at the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five enrollment today for second grade.
Yes.
So definitely something.
Yeah, and we don't know what kindergarten's going to look like.
I will say in this report, as I'm scanning through it just for, you know, interest level, this is twenty-twenty-one school year. They projected that our total enrollment in this Fletcher Thompson report would be two thousand eight hundred and sixty-three students.
Not the money.
They're awful.
At the medium. At the high, they had projected that we would be at two thousand nine hundred and four, and we are well over thirty-two hundred.
We're two, we're two oh, two eleven over the high projection.
Uh huh. I mean, now get granted, this came out in early twenty-fifteen, but.
Yeah, but clearly you can see that that, so then that's evidence that this, this COVID spike, oh, I shouldn't say that, that's a bad word, that's not a good phrase. The more kids that are coming in because people are moving, moving here, that that's not just, this is not just COVID. There's been an uptick over the last five or six years because we can see that we're almost seven percent over what they were projecting six years ago today.
Mike, what do you, what's yours, what, what are you at, at middle?
Seven fifty-seven, I think it was.
They had said you would be at seven oh-nine. They said MASC would be at nine seventy-one, and that K-five would be twelve twenty-four. In this report. That's at the high. It, it's striking. But maybe, you know, maybe, I, I mean, it's almost four hundred pages, I mean, of this report, but maybe certain aspects of it where they had the different scenarios of configurations of the school, because they did provide that, would be important to actually look at.
That's an interesting sheet to look at, the, the different scenarios in repurposing the space. I know at one, I, I think the second closest thing to come in was the, where STEM is now, making that the preschool.
I was going to say, right, I remember that.
I remember that too.
Me too. I was going to say, there was talk about moving, is it kindergarten? They are two.
And making that, yeah, kindergarten, pre-K, K.
MASC or something, yeah.
Yep, and then making the, the schools one through six.
I mean, when they closed Chalk Hill, there was so many different scenarios.
Yep.
Before STEM came today.
Yep.
So it all works out.
Right, and quite honestly, according to this, and this was updated in seventeen, which was adding scenario app. So I'm saying there's a substantial amount of.
Yep.
Scenarios.
There's a bunch, yeah. I could pull those from the next meeting.
Yeah, let's, let's just pull that, the sheets that have the different scenarios.
Scenarios, yeah.
Because a lot of people weren't here on the board, and I mean, this was so long ago, I can't remember what I did last week. Forget about like five, plus, almost six years ago. And I think that would be important.
Other questions? I mean, some of these ones are pretty straightforward. Jeff, the, the question, and I can come back. I asked Steve and Lisa, I'm sorry, Steve Swanson and Lisa Peterson to help out with the elective. It says how many total elective courses do we offer at MASC, as I compare to other districts. Obviously getting the other districts, that's going to be, that's going to take some investigating. And then for electives, are you ta?
I guess I'm maybe not phrasing, I'm thinking of it as a college level, where you're choosing elective courses outside of your main.
Yeah, and so I think you're talking about, like, if you're taking career and technology education classes, if you're taking, you know, like robotics, or woodshop, or, you know, and the fine arts you're taking. Because when Lisa ran the, the stuff, she included, like, you need three years of math. So technically calculus is an elective, it's really not an elective for those kids. They're taking, most of them are taking, you know, four years of, of a math. So I don't think you wanted the academic, other classes that, that kids can take, that can count as their, as their, as their requirement as well. So I can, I can get that, I can get that for you. In terms of, you know, Steve and I were talking a little bit today about the, you know, you know, possibly running classes every other year to try to get, and we've done this in some, in some courses here at MASC, where you don't have enough enrollment for one year, so you add it, you know.
What is that number that you guys use to, to base whether a course runs or not?
You know, we try to do, I mean, the, the minimum, you know, when I was here, you know, I try never to run much below ten. I mean, ten's really small, but you do have kids that, you know, want those particular classes, especially if it's an AP class, like AP chemistry tends to be really, really, you know, not a lot of kids in it. But it's a, you know, if there's ten kids in AP chemistry, those are, you know, some of your, you know, most competitive, most competitive kids in the building.
On your elective, Joe, too, we have independent studies. Now, for seniors doing an independent study, you really aren't going to handle more than eight, ten. They're doing their own projects independently in an elective setting.
Yeah.
So there's all kinds of, I mean, when Joe Summery and Steve Summery, Steve, Joe, whoever did the staffing summary.
Yeah.
I mean, I know some of the classes look small, but when you read the titles.
Well, you gotta, you know what's, you know, and the one thing with those, and you're right, Jerry, I'm glad you pointed it out, is you got to look at the periods that the class are meet, because you might see like six kids in a class, and, and seven kids in a class, and three kids in an independent study, and they're all meeting in the same area.
They're all together, that's what I mean.
There's sixteen kids in that class.
So it looks small when you first look, look at it, but they're not physically, they're all in the same room.
Yeah, when you see ones that say one or two, there's not a class running that's one or two kids. Not to say that, like I was talking to Steve, that there's, might be some classes that we might want to offer every other year to get, you know, to increase enrollment there. Graduation requirements, I, kind of along the same line, Nick, I printed off the, it's actually, that's comes, I think, straight from our program of studies that has the current requirements, because our, our students that are currently sophomores are on the, kind of the, the top track where they're, they have twenty-two and a half, and then.
No, those are juniors.
Current juniors, right?
Current juniors.
Current juniors have twenty-two and a half credits to graduate. Everybody else falls under the new state statute of, of twenty-five, and that's kind of the credit distribution there. To your question though, Nick, yeah, the majority of kids will have, you know, especially if you're, you know, if you're looking to go to a four-year college, most of the students will take four years of a world language, four years of, of a math, four years of science. So they'll go above and beyond the, the requirements that are just listed there.
I think it's also important to note that they kind of, the state, in their infinite wisdom, instead of making it very much allowing the children, the students to kind of have flexibility to decide, because like the old credits were seven full credits of electives. That's a one, one credit is a full year. Well, what they did was, they changed that and made it very specific. So no longer does the kids really have the ability to kind of take whatever electives they want. The state has now really honed in and said, oh, no, 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 you're not going to be able to take this because you're going to need to do something, you know, three electives in the STEM area, and you need to take, you know, one and a half electives in humanities, and you need to take, you know, three additional electors, and you need to have a world language, and you need to have at least a point five in the arts. You know, so they've, they've actually, I think, tried to make it where, you know, they're trying to have a well-balanced child who's taking a lot of things, but like, and I've used this argument before, I have a child who, who's graduated, so it doesn't affect her, was not an art child, could only draw a stick figure. So you go to high school, you know whether or not you are going, if you want art, or you don't want art. To force a child to take an art-type class to meet a point five is kind of, you know, you know, you know, that's not really fair. Instead of being able to take possibly another AP class, you know, that they want, or some sort of other elective that they're more interested in, like career, you know, they're kind of forcing kids. So the problem also is, you are, you have to offer all these different things because the kids have to have all of these, meet every single one of these requirements for us to be able to graduate them. It's no longer, hey, take seven electives and whatever you want.
Um, Joe, is the, the Capstone project, is that, does a state change from half a credit to a full credit?
Yeah.
Is that going to affect, I mean, I'm sure it's going to affect us in not this year, but next year, I guess?
Depending on how, you know, I haven't sat down with Steve yet, and I don't know, Steve, if you've sat down to talk to the Capstone advisors at all to see, you know, how we're going to, you know, beef that up, because it's a half-credit now.
Yeah, they, preliminary conversations, they know that it's going to be the performance-based assessment, right, what the state is looking for, and we're just going to have to ramp up the, what's currently being done, just a little bit. Not really, because the project and program as it is, it's, it's a lot of work for kids. It's just, you know, keeping it up a little bit to, to.
And then when we, so when the students are choosing their electives, like if there's humanities electives, STEM electives, and additional electives, and are in like the program of studies, are the courses designated?
Starting, starting with next year's program studies, they are designated. There's actually a little symbol right next to the course.
So you can track what you're hitting, yeah?
And they meet with the guidance council every year. Yeah.
Yeah, let's see, so like I'll give an example, like social studies, there's three credits, but like AP psychology happens to fall under social studies, so that would be, that would be inclusive of your humanities elective.
I, I definitely agree. I think it's, you know, the, the new requirements, they, they're definitely more restrictive than they were, you know. But I think, hopefully, it gives a little bit more of a, a broader base to the graduates. And you know, your comment about the arts, you know, I'm sure we offer, we, there's visual and performing arts. There's so many, hopefully, there's so many different places where students can go. I was one of those drawing a stick.
And I'm just making that as an example, like, so like, but you also have the flip side. So like I have a middle daughter who only takes bands because she's a band child. To force her to not be able to take a year of band because she may have to take a year of career, of occasion, education, why would you do that to, and again, this won't matter in a block schedule, but if we didn't have a block schedule, you would be forcing a child to give up something they love, which is their band, music, strings, orchestra, you know, orchestra strings, you know, singing, chorus, to take something that they have no interest in whatsoever, you know. And, and the block schedule doesn't, you know, prevents that, but that, that's the problem. Like you're making, you're forcing kids to take things they don't want to take, instead of taking things like an AP class that they better be suited for, or taking something they love, like a bands or a chorus.
Yeah. The block does definitely offers more flexibility in, in scheduling with kids, too. I always said, the, the eight-period day that we had was really a seven-period day, because you had a, you had a lunch period. Everyone was scheduled for a lunch period, and it was actually, it created a double constraint in scheduling because you had, you know, the teachers had to have a lunch period, the, the students had to have a lunch period, and the teachers had to have a lunch period. So if that didn't match up, you've just taken two periods out of the day where you, you know, you might be able to run a, a class. So, you know, the, the new block schedule, but, you know, that's the other piece with this new graduation requirement going up to twenty-five credits, we have students that are going to be taking six courses next year. You know, when our kids, we have probably a lot of kids right now that are taking five in the block, and a lot of that was just out of just straight necessity for what happened this year. Our, our kids get, our, our staff scheduled for our straight eight-period day with the, with the lunch this year, and out of necessity with COVID to reduce travel time in the hallways and, you know, promote more social distancing and whatnot, we moved to the block, you know, out of complete necessity, so. But we were going in that direction anyway, but.
And then, of course, the other big change is now you have a full, we used to do a point two in health, now it's a full one-year credit.
Yep.
That everybody has to take a full year of health. And that's a huge, that's another big change.
Yeah, I mean, these are the, you know, we decry the unfunded mandates all the time, but those are, those are like, those are really significant. I mean, those are, you know, part of the, you know, the, the issue, you know, we're going to have in science in a year or so is going to come from the fact that we have to take a science teacher probably next year and have them, you know, pick up a number of health classes. And then we're going to have this bubble of kids coming through chemistry and, and physics at the same time. So, you know, those, those unfunded mandates do, you know, just to increase it to a one-credit of health from a, you know, a point-two credit, it's really significant. That's every student in the, in the building has to have it. Right now, well, under a previous eight-period schedule, you had health for two, two periods a week for one semester. And I'm not, not to say that, that it's not a bad thing, that now it's going to a one, you know, one-credit, but, you know, that was it. Kids were done after a semester of health, the freshman year. Now, this is going to, you know, this is going to be a sequence of, of classes. They take, you know, half-credit one year, and then a half-credit probably two years later. But we had one health forever, since, you know, for the longest time, we've had one health teacher service this entire building, that will probably have a number, you know, like I said, we're gonna take someone from science, and we may have to even rely on some of our PE teachers, who are all duly certified in PE and health, to help pick that up as well. Though for the big ones, I mean, there's other information there that folks had asked, that, please, if you have any questions on some of those.
Yes, Sheila, thank you. I mean, that's important, I appreciate that. That was a lot of work. Yeah. Well, I like how also I see UConn's in here saying they'd like to strike up a relationship with us, because they have a ton of students from around, you know, it's good stuff. I mean, if we can't do it, we can't, but I appreciate the work.
All right, anybody else have any questions on any of the questions and answers that we have?
Joe, when I add up, on Nick's question thirty-one, so when I add up the total number of members, which I added up already, it's four-twenty-three, do we have any people here that are non-union?
Oh, yeah.
So what's our total amount of employees? And not for now, Joe, Joe, you don't have to do it for now, I'll send you an email. But what's the total number of employees in the school system?
I should know that off the top of my head, I believe it's around four-sixty-something, but I'll get it for you.
Yeah, it's no problem. I'll shoot, I promise, I'll shoot you an email.
All right. And if there's specific staffing questions, however you guys want to walk through the next, the one piece of good news is, in small, but we did find one, one duplication from a person that changed schools. So it's just one of the speech assistants, but on page thirty-three of section four, there's a speech assistant position in there for sixteen thousand thirty-five dollars. That will get removed, because it was duplicated, it was picked up twice.
All right, everybody, how do you guys want to go about this? We're in section four, which is the budget detail. How does everybody want to go about moving forward with this?
You know what, Donna, I actually had gone through the Monroe BOE historical comparison budget report, and marked that up.
Okay.
Okay, so what section do you want to go to? The three?
No, in, in the, you know, the first few pages of that are all, are all staff, so...
The summaries, yeah.
So budget, sorry, section three, just so we know everybody, where everybody is section three.
Yep. I had marked that up.
Would you prefer going through that as opposed to the detail, and then if we need to, we can flip to detail?
Sure, that's fine. I'm just saying, maybe we should just go through it, and all of us asking the questions that we have on staffing, and that would, I don't see a need to go line by line through staffing and budget, but certainly, I think if there's line items that have a significant change, we could ask about that. There's line items on, and I'll start off, Joe, so line items that are over a contractual amount, like a seven-point-three or a six-point-three, that would probably be a contract and a line change, correct?
Can you give me an example? So I'll give you, I'll give you an example, what you're saying, Dave. So if you look on page one of thirty-three there, and you'll see, you know, admin principal certified staff, MASEC, it's a seven-point-eight-three percent. That's probably because that particular person started the job this year into the year, and this has happened in a couple places. So, and then, yeah, so next year, we'll be getting twelve months. So I know that was a case in a couple of different spots, in instructional leaders, that was a, that was a spot as well. I mean, that was a situation as well.
I did want to ask, you just want to look at page, page one there, under admin unaffiliated payroll, adjustment system-wide, eighty-five fourteen. Was that picking up on errors, or that was a?
Those are, those are projected increases for the superintendent and assistant superintendent.
Thank you.
Yep.
Would it make more sense to go through the staff summary, section six? We can go like school by school?
Well, I think they want to look at numbers, not necessarily...
Okay.
I think that, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, Dave, you're looking at more the dollars than the, than the actual staffing at levels.
Yeah, I'm looking at the, at the...
And sometimes, Dave...
Difference between budget and super. You know, in other words, Joe, why did you make these changes, or why was this increased, or why was this decreased, I think?
Yeah, and I think some of it was just, like, reallocating people, so I think, again, another one to your point, Dave, is like, the bottom line, teacher certified staff, music, step the elementary seventeen-point-oh-nine percent increase.
Yep, yep.
We have the same number of, if you look at other music teachers throughout the district, you're probably gonna find a seventeen-point-oh-nine decrease in other places. It's just where we allocated the staff to where they were properly placed. So they may have been, you know, caught up in another, at another school last year, especially stuff like, especially things like music, where, you know, basically what happens every year is, we sit down and, you know, literally allocate, not financially, but allocate the music staff separately every year, like, hey, this person's gonna go here for Monday and Wednesday mornings, and here for Tuesday and Thursday mornings, and this was just kind of truing all that up. So wherever you see like a jump like that, you might see a decrease, you know, somewhere else in the budget.
How about, I'll just go through a couple?
Go ahead, yeah.
People will entertain.
Go ahead, yeah. What page, Dave?
Page six, on the, on section three.
Mm-hmm.
Sorry, lifeguards, that's up significantly, it was, are we increasing lifeguards? I know the pool isn't, well, we're expecting to be back open, right?
That's, that's part of the big thing, is that, expecting it to be open, it hasn't been open, it was closed, you know.
Yeah, and I'm not looking, I'm trying not to compare it to this year.
And the, the other issue is, the minimum wage has increased, because they get paid minimum wage, it's gone up every year, and it's gonna go up another dollar again for this current year.
How about page seven, stipend, finance CO?
So I can...
Is that part of what we were...
Yeah, so I can speak to that.
So you're talking about the thirty-one-thousand-dollar change there?
Correct.
So, current fiscal year, it's kind of a catch-all, it's not only finance stipends, Dave, it's, there's IT stipends in there, and there were some transition stipends that were basically unbudgeted from the current, they were not budgeted this year.
Thank you.
Joe, I just have a general question, now that we're talking about the teacher staffing. So we have these new ads, like sixth grade, Jockey Hollow, Chem, MASEC, those are the new ones that are coming into this budget?
Yeah.
How do you budget, like, new hires, which means, so like, if someone comes in at a, you know, step six with MA plus thirty versus a step-one BA?
How do we budget for that?
Yeah.
Yeah, what we, what we do is, quite honestly, for a sixth-grade position, for that sixth-grade position, you know, mostly everyone coming in is coming in with a master's now, it's very rare, we actually just hired someone with a bachelor's, which is nice for us in the budget. But, you know, most of the people now are coming in with a master's. If it's a position, an elementary school position, particular subjects in the high school are easier to get, English and social studies generally tend, tend to be a much larger pool, you know, if we can get a good qualified person at a master's zero, you know, with no experience, you know, that's, that's where we budget them. For some of the trickier positions, we'll budget a little bit higher. So I think for the world language position and the special education position, I think we budgeted like a master's five.
So you actually budget each position separately based on the content area that's opening in?
Yeah. So I know, we'll probably have a physics opening within the next three or four years. Unless we strike gold, it's almost impossible to get a brand-new, you know, someone just out of college, you know, ready to teach physics. So we'll have to budget that one, you know, we'll have to budget that one a little bit higher. And then, then when we also budget that, you know, you know, if I'm gonna, and again, this is all just part of the assumptions that we're making during the budget process. So for Mike's, you know, sixth-grade position, I did a master's zero, and that prices include, built into their prices, and we didn't break it out into the, we put it all into the salaries for now, just for budgetary purposes, we put the benefits in. Someone like, someone like that, we're putting in as single benefits. If we're, if we're looking to get someone with a master's five, or someone with a little bit more experience, you know, we're gonna at least, at least budget for, you know, a single plus one benefits.
Ron, can you go to page thirteen for me? Well, I'm gonna bring it up, pension contribution, that's our non-certified, four-hundred-and-forty-two-thousand, five-twenty-one. Is that the time slide?
Yeah, so, yeah, correct. So there's the, there's a couple things in there. So the four-hundred, if you go to the detailed, four-hundred's actually made up of the three-seventy-five for the ADEC, which is the contribution, and then there's some actuary fees in there also, related to the pension. And the forty-two is, that's the four-oh-one-A contribution for the paraprofessionals. It's a three percent, there's a match there, employer match.
Okay.
So the, the, the portion, that's the contribution, the employer portion, for the Monroe Retirement Income Plan is three-seventy-five, that's budgeted right now.
Would it be worthwhile, and Nick and I are on pension committee, I know a lot of that's contractual, but with a ninety-six percent funded plan, is that something that we can have a conversation about deferring? Outside of the contractual, the four-oh-one-K contributions and things like that?
Yeah, I think, I think it's worth having the conversation, I don't, I don't know, I think I would probably bring it, you know, I'd probably bring it up at the pension committee meeting, next pension committee meeting.
You can do that, Dave.
I will, thanks.
I just want to clarify, I wouldn't necessarily agree with deferring the payment, but, you know, I think that's something that, you know, it's worth having the conversation.
Yeah, just ask him the question, that's all. It's four-hundred-and-forty-two-thousand dollars.
On the advanced degree line, which I'm...
What page, Nick, I'm sorry?
Those are all line changes.
Those are the line changes, right?
Yes, yeah. And I think they were budgeted in a different line last year.
I actually can't find the page one.
It was actually one of my questions in the packet, wasn't it?
I think it was, yeah, yeah.
What page is that?
I have the same thing, what the, what the coding was to budget for the degrees. Joe, without getting into specifics on legal issues, but has communication started with Bridgeport on negotiating settlement and payments?
It has.
Rather a lump sum?
Yeah, yes, it has.
Okay, because I just, I don't believe we should be making a lump sum on that. I know it'd be nice to get rid of it, but I think we should drop that down and budget thirty or forty thousand a year for that, my opinion on it.
It's on page three, the line changes, right in the, right in the middle.
Yeah, page three, thank you.
Thank you, that's what I had, that's what I had marked up.
That account was just never used before, I don't know why, historically, but it was, it was not a newly created account?
Well, I think one of the, I think I asked that last year, too, and the answer I got was, money goes in there, and then it gets reapportioned.
It does.
To the lot, so, I mean, it'll show a zero, right?
It, it could, yeah. It was not budgeted on that, in that line item last year.
Oh, it wasn't even budgeted there?
It was not budgeted, no.
Well, because you, Joe, you know what's coming, right? I mean, you, there's a dead, there's a date that people have to submit changes by, right, so...
For line changes, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, October fifteenth, they have to let us know for the next year, which is good, it's right before the budgets start, so.
Right.
So we know that already, yeah.
And if they don't let you know by that date, they can't come in until the next budget?
Nope.
Right.
And we hold firm to that. We had one this year, and we had one last year.
Nick, I think this was all part of our line-by-line last year, where we wanted things very clear and in the right lines. We got rid of all the chalkhill lines, so this is, this is much better.
We did say that, we said, we don't care if it shows where there's no history, we want it in the correct place.
Yes.
One more question, I can't remember if I asked this or not already, but on page six, at the bottom of page six, the tech and the custodial summer work lines, are those, those are zeroed out in the current year?
Yeah, they were zeroed out, and that's really important that we, that we get those back in. That was, I know Paul talked about this a little bit during his presentation on the, on the tech one, but usually we hire summer help, you know, to get, to get our schools ready. It's usually, you know, minimum wage, mostly high school kids that are just recent graduates that come in and work. It was zeroed out this year because our buildings were empty, and we were able to get into the buildings, you know, we started seeing in May, we weren't gonna be coming back for the year, so we were able to get tech in, we were able to get the custodians' maintenance in over the summer, so, you know, we used that money to help deal with the fiscal problems we were having in, you know, for this year.
And on the IT side, too, hopefully we'll get our capital request, but a hundred-and-something laptops and all the desktops, we gotta have that summer IT work in here, or they're not gonna be ready for September.
They do that, they go around, they, they go around, they disconnect every computer in the district, then the, then the other kids that are working maintenance and take everything out of the classrooms, they put everything back, the IT then goes back in and, you know, reconnects everything. In addition to cloning however many Chromebooks, or this year, you know, hopefully, you know, getting our laptops set up for teachers.
Joe, do we ever, I know, like, we talked in, in special ed about the grant, like, for the transition counselors is done, and now it's in our operating budget. Are there any other, like, grant opportunities, like revenue that we can bring in to offset some of these things?
Go to section nine.
I mean, if it's, so...
Brian guessed anymore?
Yeah. So if it's not, if it's not offsetting in the budget, it's, the expenses are being pulled out and being paid out of the grant, so it's, it's not like any grant money's being unspent, out in the fund, in another fund. Sheila can probably talk in more detail there.
I know grants, trying to write grants is very time-consuming, correct? I mean, but is, so, so I'm not saying, you know, oh, nobody's doing that, all I'm, all I'm asking is, is there a lot more grants out there? If we had capacity, a grant writer, that we would be getting a lot more, or are we tapping into pretty much everything that there is out there available? tapping into pretty much everything that there is out there available?
My knowledge, we're tapping into everything that's available to schools, you know, the state will let us know how much money we could be allocated, it's been a matter of us for writing names of the grants, application, getting that approved, and then getting the money funded. The money's changed every year.
Who's writing the grants? Who writes the grants for the district?
Um, I do Title I, Title II, Title IV. And ID.
Bill McDonough does Perkins.
Bill does Perkins, yeah.
I think that's it. And then the doctor and the coronavirus, we did it as a senior principal.
Yeah, this year. I've spent a lot of time.
Oh, yeah, I'm sure it's very time-consuming to do that.
Yeah.
And just, just a comment, Dave, I agree with your comment about when we have the settlement, the only thing I, I'd like to add is, I don't know if we're gonna have much of a, it's not up to us. I agree with you, but I don't know if we're gonna have the final say of what we contribute to whatever it is. And then Ron, if we can get back to page thirteen a minute, and talk to what Dave was on retirement pensions, you've got the CO, which is central office, right? And you've got the system-wide.
Yeah, I'm not sure why they're, well, the, the one that's CO is the, that's the defined benefit plan.
Okay.
For non-certified staff.
For non-certified, that's, thank you, you just answered. Thank you. Got it. All set.
I had a question regarding the, the elementary paraprofessionals for, for lunch. Is that, that, that ad, is that, is that all that they would be doing? I guess, I guess is what I'm asking on the, the paraprofessionals that we have allocated for, that are new, or specific for lunch.
Yeah, there would just be a few hours a day.
So it, it, so who would these, do we have them now? We've had them in the past, right?
We've had them, yeah, we've had them in the past. Right now, we have two, really, this is, this goes back to, if you remember from my, my opening night, and you guys feel free to jump into, this really speaks more to professional development than anything. That was our, that was the time when our teachers would get together for their midday meetings, and they would have the paras covering the, the lunch paras, covering, covering lunch, so they could meet and do their, have their midday meetings, collaboration time, work on curriculum together, you know, even probably more important next year without the coordinators again, because they, that's the work that they've gotta, they've gotta
A stunning number is that we pay a million dollars in payroll taxes.
Yeah.
So we're paying taxes to pay taxes, in a, to the tune of a million dollars.
Government wants their money.
Think about that. Yeah, the state will never give that up, but that's, that's, that's an incredible number to digest. Taxes on top of taxes.
And the thing is, I'm sure that the overwhelming majority of our staff do not meet the social security limit, which is going up to a hundred and thirty-seven thousand next year, so your social security and your Medicare are, are, they're, they're not meeting a limit where you're stopping them.
And just made me think of something else. We just got a Christmas present from the state too, on new gas tax, I understand?
Yep, seventeen cents today.
So, so we may need to adjust, Ron, for that in this, seventeen cents a gallon, so I don't know how that affects our, our projections, but we may have to increase that line item.
Did that go through?
Yes, he signed it today, Lamont.
Seventeen cents a gallon.
All right, yeah, I'll, I'll double check with the-
Does it apply to heating?
With the DPW director, I'm not sure we pay, I don't think we pay tax on our fuel.
Because we're buying it wholesale?
Yeah.
Yeah, I hope.
I'll, I'll, I could double check that though, Dave.
Yeah, thank you. I don't wanna get caught off guard with that.
Does that apply just to gas or heating also?
I thought it was a gasoline tax.
I thought it was a gasoline tax too.
Yeah. Because I guess we were not the highest anymore, and so then they-
You gotta be number one at something.
Gotta be number one at something.
When did that be, become effective?
Just today, like, late today.
Yeah, but is it effective January one? I think it's, I don't know.
That I'm not sure. He signed it today. What that is, what the effective date of that is, I'm not a hundred percent sure. That, I didn't look that far into it.
I think it has, I mean, it has to be part of the budget, I don't think, he can't just raise the gas tax without the legislature approving it, so.
All I know is he signed it today.
He, he signed onto a regional climate initiative, which approved by the legislature would increase the gas tax.
If they approve it, it will increase it. Gotcha. Yeah, I just saw it.
Gotcha. I just saw it's going up seventeen percent.
Yeah.
Well, if the legislature approves his budget, which, well, if we even have a budget.
But it's important to look into, because if we pay wholesale and we don't pay tax, hey, we're fine. But if we do, then that could be a signif, it doesn't sound like a lot, but that, given how much, you know, fuel we use, that could be significant, gas we use.
Ron, on page twenty-six, I know we added fifty-five thousand in there, and we didn't talk about it before, to cover additional COVID and cleaning supplies. I do wanna have a conversation with the Board of Finance about if we need to put that fifty-five thousand in our line item, or if they're gonna cover it with the half a million dollars that they put away, because I'm getting some indications that they're gonna cover it, but I wanna clarify that prior to removing fifty-five thousand dollars from that line item, so I'll, I'll make a note to talk to them about that.
Yeah, and I think the tough part there is, is, you know, our, our cleaning habits just gonna change going forward, so is that something that at some point will need to get built into the budget? You know, that's, that's, and that's probably a question we won't be able to answer in the next-
No, we talked about it two weeks ago, and Jack said so far we've spent, I don't wanna quote you, about two hundred thousand on cleaning, and I know, we're all hoping it's gonna be post-COVID, I got it, but already we've spent two hundred thousand, and we're budgeting how much for the whole year next, next year.
Yeah, we still need to clean.
Yeah, we still need to clean.
I think what I'm suggesting there, Jerry, is we go up a regular, you know, one and a half, two percent, and then, yeah, but maybe not pull fifty-five thousand.
Okay, yeah.
Because it's sixty, sixty-seven percent, and I think it's good that Joe and Ron have planned that.
Yeah, so do I, yeah.
But if the town is gonna cover us on their side specifically for the COVID issues-
I agree.
Yeah.
If they're gonna cover it, that's fine.
Right, I just want to clarify that with them, that might be some additional savings from us that they're helping us with.
Even a better reason why, when we go to the Board of Finance, when our budget gets transmitted to the Board of Finance, that we have a joint meeting, so that all board members can talk to things like that.
That's important.
Since we're kinda jumping around different places now, the other thing I, I just thought about, as we were talking before, about looking at the space distribution and all that kind of stuff, I don't know if we wanna put money in here to get a company to refresh some of our projections, our student projections, our physical space, because if we get to next year and say we wanna look at something, and we don't have money in the budget to pay somebody to do a study or something.
Alan, would you like to jump on that first before I?
I've been jumping on that for years.
This is why I said you guys may not wanna sit next to each other.
I, I've been jumping on it for years. I mean, these population studies are ridiculous. If I wanna know how many students there're gonna be, I'd get a better idea talking to Jeff and Shannon than a regression formula that costs us eleven thousand dollars.
Maybe not demographics, but more about space.
Yeah, I get it.
Okay, shut up.
No, no, I was gonna ask what something like that would cost, I wasn't asking you to shut up.
Well, you kicked it over to Alan, who just-
I saw Alan, like, smoke was coming.
Ripped me apart.
Well, I was right, last year I said we better off getting a pack of tarot cards for the enrollment, and look what happened. The enrollment study that we paid all that money for was a total disaster.
You voted no, Alan, we know, we got it.
So what, what does a study cost? Do you know that?
Which type of study?
Demographics, uh-
Well, demographic study probably is what, fifteen thousand?
That's what I thought the last one was, okay.
I don't really, I don't want another demographic study, I agree.
No, and I was gonna ask how much a building use, like, to hire a company to do a-
Oh, like, like, that, like they did the, for the ad hoc? I'm thinking that was probably significant, I'm thinking that was probably, probably what? I wouldn't even wanna guess.
I thought it was like eighty thousand, but I wasn't sure.
I was gonna say seventy to eighty thousand dollars.
Yeah, I think it was like seventy, eighty thousand.
I mean, I'm with, with you on this, I think we need somebody's-
My point is, we just, we discussed, you know, hour and a half ago about, you know, I kept harping on second grade is sixteen over the high projection, and if we wanted to talk about anything next year about space, or, or redistricting, or whatever we wanna call it, we're gonna need to fund something, so I don't know if you just, I don't know.
No, we have to. It's something that has to be done, I just don't know how to add it, how much to add.
Yeah, exactly.
Where to add, I know where to add. I'm for it, I just don't know how to go about it.
Maybe it's something just to ponder for after the, after the holiday break, we can come back and-
Well, you know how I am, I'm looking at this as an equal arm, so if I'm giving eighty for the study, then who am I cutting? Or where am I getting the eighty from?
Yeah, that's true.
Shouldn't say, well, I don't, I'm not cutting anyone. Where am I getting the eighty from? So that's what I'm trying to figure out. But I'm with you, we do need somebody to, to help us through the process, because we don't wanna be doing this alone. Trust me, you do not wanna walk on those coals by yourself. You want somebody leading you, or helping you through the process.
Right, and we're no experts to do that. I mean, that would take expertise.
It would. How do we go about getting a price, Joe?
I could, I could look back at the, the ad hoc and just see, I can reach out to Fletcher Thompson, I guess.
And I would reach out to Fairfield.
Yeah.
Because Fairfield just had-
Oh, good point, they did just do it, yeah.
They just did a re, a redistricting plan.
Okay, I like that.
There's, there's probably someone on a consortium or state bid that we could-
It's gotta be, right.
Thank you, that would be great. Next, great idea.
And then when I, when I walked in, I know Finance Committee were talking about it, about the Director of Finance position. Are we entering any closer to that? Because we still have a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollar budgeted for that?
It's very drafty, preliminary, in that running.
So is that something, as we go forward, we can maybe adjust it next month, or is it really gonna get left?
I don't know if that's that close, that's a wrong question.
I, I think the, the MOU for my position, I think expires January fifteenth, so I think the First Selectman, Selectman was looking to take some kind of action before that.
So then we probably will have some sort of direction before we vote.
So we need to communicate with First Selectman over that then, right? One of us, some of us?
And we've started to have some of those meetings, yeah, Ron and I, yeah, Ron and I have been meeting. You know, I think, I think-
Not to open up that can of worms, I'm just looking at it from a budgeting number.
You know, the, the, I don't know that there's gonna be a huge savings there, but I think, you know, one of the things that we looked at this year was, you know, one of the biggest benefits of, of having the shared position is knowing, the left hand knowing what the right hand is doing, and vice versa. And I think a good example of that was this year, when we did the driveway here, and we ran into a, we ran into a drainage problem, and so, you know, it turned into a much bigger project that we would have probably, in the past, have gone out and had someone do it for probably three times what it cost. You know, Ron talked to the highway department, ended up working with the town, highway department ended up doing that, so, you know, it saved us a lot of money in the end, and that, I think those are, those are the kinds of savings that we can anticipate.
And I think the First Selectman- I think, I think from the facility standpoint, Dan, Dan's got a good relationship with a lot of the guys over at the highway department now, so.
Yeah, I was just asking to, at some point, I think we need to true up that line item.
Yeah.
Once we know what we're doing with that position.
That might also be a line item that, like, gets adjusted at the Board of Finance level, like, because it might take those three months to-
Yeah, yeah.
Well, one of those, I call them negotiated cuts, that, you know, you all agree is gonna move.
Don, I had a question regarding the, the secretary line. If you look at, sorry for jumping around, but if you look at the budget detail report-
What page, Dan?
The budget detail report on fifty-three, it's under the Office Personnel from MSEC, the secretaries, you have eight secretaries in this line, or under this line, and then if you go to the staff summary under MSEC, you have on non-certified, you have a seven, and then I'm assuming that that special ed secretary is part of that eight secretary? Ed MSEC? Because I don't see in the detail report, MSEC having, most of the other schools have their own special ed secretary, as opposed to MSEC, at least that line on is not in the detail report. Is the, is one of the eight secretaries in the detail report, is that a special ed secretary?
It is, yeah. And that could be, that could be changed, I don't know why that's broken out like that, but no, it is. That's the eight, the eight, that's how I judge, yeah.
One of those is specific to special ed.
Yeah, if you look on the, if you look on the staffing summary, you know, on the far left, it says nurse, secretarial full-time, which is the twelve-month four, secretarial ten-month three, and then secretarial special ed one.
Right. Yeah, no, I was just really referring to the, if you, in the detail report, it breaks down for all the other schools, you have a special ed secretary line.
Yeah, and this one doesn't.
And the MSEC does it, and my question was, was one of those a special ed secretary?
It is, yeah.
Maybe, Joe, you can explain why there's eight there?
Eight at MSEC? Yep, yep, in the main office, Steve, jump in if I, if you're sup, we have the, you have the receptionist, we have the, the finance clerk in the main office, and then you have the, the principal secretary. In special education, we have the special education secretary, and guidance, there's one for the college and career services office, and one receptionist for the, for the, for the guidance office, and then there's a, the last one is the secretary for the athletic director.
So guidance has two, there's two in guidance?
There's, there's, yeah, yep, two in guidance, one's in the college and career center, one is out in the, in the main guidance area.
And can you maybe discuss what some of them do?
Sure. You know, I'll start with the, I'll start with the, in the main office with, you know, the principal secretary, actually now, we used to have in the main office, especially when I was the assistant principal, we had two secretaries, one, one for the principal, and then one for, at that time, when I was a dean, we had a secretary for myself as a dean, and then the two assistant principals, and now we only have one who actually services all three, the, the principal and the two assistant principals, you know, with everything. In the front, you have the, the, the receptionist, who deals with, you know, all the, you know, the comings and goings of the buildings, letting people in, dealing with, you know, the, the day-to-day, the walking and out. We have the attendance clerk, who handles all the student absenteeism, and he, you know, talks to parents, parents call up, you know, just call their kids out, deals with all that, then the- Um, then the finance clerk, uh, you know, does exactly that, um, you know, in the main office. She deals with all of the, all of the bookkeeping, um, throughout the whole building, athletics, student activities, um, instructional supplies, uh, any of that kind of equipment. In the guidance office, um, as I said, we have the, uh, the guidance receptionist, who, um, you know, handles all the parent phone calls, student registrations. Um, and then she works to coordinate any of the, uh, any of the kids who are coming into the guidance office to make appointments with the, uh, with the guidance counselors. The college and career, uh, services secretary, uh, works with, um, you know, a lot, she's the one that handles all of the college visits as colleges are coming in. And Steve, pick me up on anything if I'm, if I'm missing anything here. She works with a lot of career services and having kids do, do not, all the nabia, so student inventories, student interest inventories, to get them, uh, you know, pushed into a direction that they might wanna go, go to for, for college. Um, special ed secretary deals with all of the scheduling of the five oh, um, I'm sorry, not the five oh four meetings, all of the IEPs, getting all the paperwork, sending out all the paperwork in time for the, uh, for the high school. And then finally, the, uh, the secretary in the athletics, deals with a lot of the logistics of, you know, coordinating those, the officials, making sure they get their payments. The, um, the biggest probably time suck is probably with transportation. Um, especially, um, you know, in the spring and fall, when games are constantly being canceled and postponed because of rain and whatnot. Um, getting those made up and whatnot. Did I miss any big things for any of them? Trying to do them off the top of my head, but.
I did pretty well. Um, yeah, the attendance clerk does all the statement, added letters for, you know, the patients and et cetera, organized. Meetings, et cetera, as well. Yeah, and, uh, they, they work well together, just, you know, different ones, I think, at different times, share different positions.
I mean, at one time, when I was, when I was in there, I see, uh, like I said, as a dean, there was, I think, seven, there's either six or seven. I might, I'll say six secretaries in the front office. There's two up front and, uh, two in the, uh, I'm sorry, four up front and then two in the back. So it's, uh, right now, there's, um, three in the main office now.
Joe, what about at the elementary level? In terms of, uh, what, it looks like there's like three secretaries? Um, I'm just asking, 'cause the school, most of the schools I go to, um, there's one school secretary at each elementary school. So I was wondering, like, what would three do?
And then I'll let, uh, the elementary folks, if you guys wanna jump in at all, but you have, again, you have the, uh, elementary, I'm sorry, you have the, the principal secretary, you have the, uh, main receptionist. Um, I think those functions are similar to what goes on at the high school, and then the, uh, the special ed, special education secretary as well. That does a lot of the, again, the, um, scheduling of the PPTs, uh, getting out paperwork, getting in paperwork and whatnot.
And I guess, so Fon Hallows probably just has an extra just because of the si, just because of the size, like, the number of students? Right, agree. In addition to, and, and a sped secretary, right?
No, that, that's groupable. So she does part of responsibility sped and part of.
So when the person's not doing, um, special ed invitations or whatever, you have like two and a half?
Well, three individuals for, so one of them is my secretary, who's a full-time, who's ordered and, 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 and whatnot. One is more like the traditional reception, you know, answers the phones, is responsible for attendance. And one is special education and also answers the phones, handles attendance, and so that just be the one. She's not full-time, that's why.
But this gets back to what Jeff was saying before, because on page fifty-two, you have your three, at the bottom page fifty-two, you have your three, and Stephanie has two, and Monroe has two. But then on the, on page fifty-four, at the bottom, there's a sped, oh, that's not a secretary. That's office personnel. So who's, so what, who's that in each of the elementaries on that page fifty-four at the bottom?
I don't know, like, who is the primary, or the other place? So you'll see.
Nick, that's true.
The, um, Stephanie both have that office personnel secretary ten months, and that is our sped secretary, and I'm sure Fon Hallows.
Oh, okay, got it. No, it's, it's diff, it's totally different. Like, Fon Hallows is in, Fon Hallows is in its.
Yeah.
So Massey and Fon Hallows are in their schools.
Yeah.
And Monroe, Stephanie, Jacquet Hallo are separated out.
Yep.
Yeah.
So, so each of the elementary schools has exactly the setup that you just said.
Yeah.
Principal secretary, receptionist, and sped, uh, sped secretary. Yeah, yeah, right, right, right.
Right, and like Monroe Wells, I would imagine Nearest does both the preschool and the elementary school.
Yes.
We're actually, I didn't have this in mind. I know we updated it in the, in the.
Yeah. What's a preschool secretary, Joe?
She's our sped secretary, so she does all of special education, same thing that she would do for K five, she does it for preschool. In addition to registering neighborhood kids, supporting the C's, working the first degree, and, and referrals, and stuff like that. Preschool is actually revolving doors, our heaviest hitting P P T.
Joe, just as a general question, just, 'cause I don't know, um, a permanent sub responsibilities would be?
A permanent sub is, uh, report to the, report to the buildings.
Every day.
And, uh, every day, and they serve as the, the first person that you're gonna put into, hey, you know, so-and-so is out today, you're gonna cover that, you're gonna cover that, you're gonna cover that class for the day. So we have four at, four at Massey, Steve?
Four, yes.
Three at the middle school, and two at the elementaries. And quite honestly, we, we end up calling in subs every day. It's not enough to cover that.
With the small amount, we have guarantees that at least we have that covered.
Without having to try to find people.
Every day.
Every, oh, every day there's subs called in.
Every day.
I mean, if you throw out the COVID era that we're living in with, with more than what we normally experience.
This is a, yeah.
If you go back historically, that was enough, or that was, for what we're budgeting now is my question. That was historic, I, I would imagine we gotta throw out.
Yeah, you can't. This year, you can't.
But historically, that has been enough?
That has been enough. We, we call in, we, and the elementaries will say no. 'Cause it's even more difficult. It's hard. See, the problem is, at the high school, it's easier to cover classes, 'cause if you're a teacher, if, if you have a hall of duty or something like, you can cut, you can cover a class instead. You don't get that at the elementaries, where they're in the classes all day. So, um, you know, it's sustainable as long as, you know, at, at certain times of the year, when, you know, there's certain days when things go awry, it's not enough. Um, yeah, I'm sure they would all like more permanent subs.
Or interns.
Or interns.
I try.
Is there other questions within, within the salary area?
I just, I would just, I guess I would just make a very general comment about, um, you know, as our budget goes forward and, you know, every year, even on the town side, we look at increases in staff, right? And so, you know, this year, Jacquet Hallo has a sixth grade, we have that Spanish ad, you know, Massey can, K two at Stephanie, which we've been talking about probably for the entire, well, the entire year. The, the positions that, the, the teaching positions that are being added, I don't think in any way are, you know, egregious. And if you net those out against the positions that were cut last year, we're actually not adding, I mean, I wouldn't be surprised if we're breaking even, if we're just, we might be adding one or.
No, we're not.
Two?
We're not, no, we're down still.
We're still down?
Yeah, and the other, the other thing is, you know, we're adding, you know, in terms of, um, certified staff, we're looking to add about three and a half FTE this year.
Yeah.
But you also have to, you have to, have to, you also have to reduce approximately point eight. Because right now, we have three world language teachers teaching an additional class and getting additional pay for those classes. And we have a science teacher at the, at the high school, I mean, I'm sorry, at the middle school, teaching an additional class. So it's, it actually doesn't work out to exactly a point two, because they get paid an additional one-seventh to teach, to teach the extra class. But, you know, you have to, you have to take that out of the, the ask.
The equation, yeah.
Well, I think that's a really important point, moving this budget forward, that we're, even if you look at last year, and you look at the cuts from last year, and what we're proposing to add this year, we're still down certified staff, but our enrollment is up. So.
Well, if you go back to the slide that Joe had on there, Nick, that you were referring to, and help me out, twenty-four, twenty, if we went back to thirteen, fourteen, Joe, it was two weeks ago when you had the slide up, and we have a little bit more than we had at the year you had the slide up. We're eighteen teachers lower than we had when you had the slide up. Eighteen teachers. And we have more kids. So, yeah, I think we're way down.
Yeah, I think I misspoke. I think there were six cut, or the K, or, last year when we cut the K five coordinators, were those, those are certified staff, right?
Yeah.
Two, four, six, eight, so I think.
Yeah.
Library media specialist.
Library media.
Yeah, it was on the budget history page of, if, of the presentation. So if you looked back at it, student enrollment to where it was, which was fourteen, fifteen, Jerry.
Yep.
We had twenty, two seventy-seven point one FTEs. And we, right now, um, with relatively the same number of enrollment students, we have two fifty-nine point one six.
Oh my God, okay, yep.
But I guess my, my point is, I, I don't wanna do the math right now, because I'm tired. But, um, could, for next meeting, could we find out, like, what, how many certified did we cut last year? And how many certified are we asking to put back? Because I think, I think the percent increase, obviously, you know, it's a large number, but we're not, it's not from, we're up so many students, and the staff that we're trying to just add back from cuts last year is not even where we were. It's a lot down. So I think that number, to show what we're asking back for is a very important, uh, just one year ago benchmark.
So the next page of, of that presentation gave all the cuts. So we cut one special ed teacher at Massey, one world language teacher, the K five math coordinator, the K five science coordinator, two teacher interventionists at the elementary school, the library media specialist, a sixth grade teacher. That would be certified teaching staff, and then in addition to that, we cut one certified administrator.
There should be about eight and a half FTEs year over year, from fiscal year twenty to twenty-one. So if you go on the last, uh, staff enrollment.
Are we into section six?
Section six, the very last page. Went from two eighty-nine sixty-eight to two eighty-one sixteen. That total, total certified staff?
You're two point nine.
Mm-hmm. And then, and then you're bringing it up, the two point eight nine. So you're down eight, bringing back two point eight nine, right?
Yes.
Yep. Yeah, I roughly said two point seven. I did it as a point two each. I know they're a little bit less than a point two, 'cause they get paid, they don't get paid an extra two tenths for each decision.
Right. So just, let's call it even numbers, you're still down five and a half.
Yeah. Do more with less.
And your enrollment is up to sixty.
And we haven't even hit the summer with enrollment yet.
And that is the concern. The concern is summer enrollment.
Yeah, well, we haven't even hit our peak, I feel. Haven't even hit it.
Yikes.
Yeah, 'cause you could be in the two, in the two thousand thirteen, fourteen range for enrollment, where we had two hundred and eighty certified staff.
Yep.
And E, so, so, so the two fifty-nine, then you would add the, call it three, right? So that, um, you know, that would put you up a little, but clearly, um, still down twenty.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. I know, Donna.
Well, I mean, what, what were your, I don't, I, this is to anybody, what were your average K five class sizes in thirteen, fourteen? I mean, I'm sure they were twenty-two and twenty-four and twenty-five.
They were high.
Were they that high?
I can just, and I don't remember them all. I can speak, and Alan can attest to this, 'cause our children were in the same class. Whatever year they were in, fifth grade at Monroe, those classes were twenty-seven.
They were twenty-seven. Nick, we've always, our classes.
So then where, so then, if we had twenty more teachers, what was, what was smaller? Or were they, was it at the high school? Like, I, I don't know.
There was a bubble. I don't know where. I can't remember.
I mean, that was the only grade, prior to that grade, and that was the year that we put a fuse, you know, that was the year we lumped off a significant number of staff, that particular year, which was prior to eleven, twelve. Um, you know, prior to that, there was four sec, four sessions, four sections, excuse me, and it went to three.
I don't know if. I don't know what year, I don't know if half-day kindergarten would have played into that at all. And I don't know what year that was that we, we transitioned.
Oh, what year was that? That was. That was maybe the, I think the middle schoolers were probably the ones that were the first, the first ones.
Jim was here, so it was after.
Jim was here. Christopher was full-time, right?
Christopher was the first full-time.
Oh, he was. And he's what, seventh?
He's in seventh grade, so, yeah.
Thirteen, fourteen?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Joe, just a general question. Um, with what we are up this year, just using this year, and we anticipate, just in the elementary schools I'm talking about, as far as number of increase in students, if we see that same type of increase this summer into next school year, uh, can we accommodate that?
Yeah, I, we could still accommodate it. I mean, Jack had, I mean, right now, Lee, you're at just under six hundred at Fon Hallow. Jack, you had how many at Fon Hallow one time?
Seven hundred twenty.
We're seven hundred, am I?
That was K four.
K four, half-day kindergarten. For the, you were using the capacity of the building differently.
Yeah.
At that point, with that number.
Yep. There's room for some expansion, but not all.
I, I'm just saying, with this budget in mind.
Yeah. Yep.
In terms of, um, classroom size, you also have to consider, like, in the early grades, with all this distance learning stuff going on, how, you, you have to come out of kindergarten reading. I mean, that's the expectation. I mean, I don't, that's gotta be extremely difficult to teach these kids sit in front of a computer and learn how to read.
Yep.
So, I mean, you got, you gotta, um, take that into consideration.
Absolutely.
Next year, once these kids are moving forward, there's gonna be gaps. Do we have enough reading specialists? Do we have enough support in the classrooms to help them get caught up?
Yeah. I think all grades, not just, I mean.
I think all grades, not just, I mean, I think there's a significant gap in a lot of the grades for next year.
Right, and especially,
That's scary.
Right, and especially if the state does not reset that what the expectation of the standards are, so if they keep them the same, and they're testing to that same standard, then that, well, then it's not just a Monroe problem.
Yeah, it's a state, well, it's a country, countrywide problem, you know.
But I mean, you know, so, but Alan's right, I mean, the expectation now is kids are coming out of kindergarten and are reading on a specific level, and that wasn't the case, you know, ten, ten years ago, fifteen years ago. Anybody have other things? All right, um, so that was salaries, benefits, does anybody have things with, with regard to the benefits?
I think just the big thing with that is that, you know, we budget as is at ten, and we, we hope it comes in lower, but I think that's a reasonable amount.
Right.
For now, we can adjust it, like, like this year. It's just astronomical, the numbers are astronomical, what is it, eight million dollars in benefits?
Oh, I think getting closer to nine, I would think.
That's what I'm saying, start adding these things up, right, so, you know, three point seven in transportation, eight, nine million dollars in benefits, a million dollars in payroll taxes, it adds up really quick.
Yeah, I mean, dental and medical is eight point four. Million.
Yeah.
Actually, the eight point four is just the medical, the dental's another five hundred.
Oh, is it, okay, because it's, oh, medical and drugs, sorry.
It's close to nine.
It's close to nine.
I mean, when we, when we used to have the pie charts up, up there, we could all see how much it, you know, unfortunately, we are labor intense, that's what we are. I've always said it and always will, we are the largest employer in the town of Monroe, and always will be. So our operating budget is what it is, and, you know, I know we're trying to go through, and we have to go through line, line, but yeah, we're, we're employee-driven. I mean, that's what we are.
I mean, quite honestly, in things like water and that type of stuff, we're really kind of, there's really nothing. One thing we're going to cover, which starts on page eighteen, is transportation cost.
That contract is one more year?
That contract goes through the twenty-one, twenty-two school year.
Yeah, and then that goes out to RFP?
Donna, I'm sorry, which section?
I'm sorry, I'm section three.
I'm all over that.
Page eighteen of thirty-three, that starts transportation. The increase is a four point three nine, or a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars.
That's contractual? I'm sorry?
Yeah, I mean, the big thing I think everybody's going to see is the ginormous increase in transportation for special education summer, and that's because we didn't run that this year.
Yeah, so that money got moved last, in last year's, in the current year's budget?
Correct.
So you pull that one number out, and it's, you know, the hundred and fifty-six thousand increase is, what, fifty, two, uh,
Fifty-four thousand?
Fifty-four thousand?
Yeah, so that's what's really driving that transportation number. Not having that.
Because of this year.
Because of this year.
Yeah, but if you go back to nineteen, it's at ninety-six, six, twenty-four, so we're really going from, if you look at the historical, right, ninety-six to one oh two, it, right, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, no, so historically, if you look back on that line item, we're, you know, in line, it's just that, the increase makes it look huge, because it's a two thousand,
It's not a two thousand percent increase, yeah.
You know, only because we didn't run that this year, so we don't have that. But you, you back that out, then you have, you're looking at a fifty-four thousand dollar increase in transportation for this year.
Right, but the four point three nine percent increase is contractual, because we have contracts with all these companies, and I know, I know Darlene and Jen have done a good job in renegotiating some of those, so thank you for getting some of those reduced.
This is also a place that we saw some savings in the, in last school year. You see the total transportation student on page twenty, if you look, you know, that was due to things didn't happen. And then this year, I'm sure there's also going to be a surplus there, because there are things that are not, that are, we're not transporting kids to places, so.
Yeah, we'll have, right, we'll have some of that, you know, that'll all depend on when we go back in.
Joe, are we still obligated to pay right now under the executive order with full remote?
We are, we're paying, and I've talked to the, I've talked to them, and I think they'll work with us a little bit, too.
But that governor's order is still in effect, right, we have to pay the contracts, just not the diesel?
Governor's orders are still in effect, aren't they in effect till, like, February or something?
February, yeah.
February ninth?
Yeah.
That's important, I think, for a lot of people in town to realize, that we're under an obligation to, to pay salaries of bus drivers, and our buses are sitting idle.
And also a portion of the bus itself, and obviously our contractual fuel obligation.
Yeah.
Because if people don't know, we contract for the amount of heat oil we're going to use, and the amount of fuel, gasoline we're going to use, so we're, if we say we're going to use two hundred thousand gallons, we have to buy two hundred thousand gallons. Because we are contractually obligated.
Well, they, they should be used to it if they have home heating oil, and they buy a contract, because they're doing, they don't like to admit it, but they're doing the same thing. You're promising that oil company you're going to use X amount of gallons.
Right, but we're part of consortium for that, you know, that they, we negotiate, very low negotiated rate for that, but we actually have to, actually, based on prior, prior year numbers, we actually can, you know, sign a contract with that consortium to use that, correct, Ron?
That's correct. Yeah, we went through that when this whole thing started.
Yes, yeah, but that's just important to put that out there, not for us, but for the people at home who maybe don't understand that when they're thinking, wow, schools are closed, they're not really using the, you know, oil. And not many of our schools use oil, it's just one, right?
Yeah.
Which is Stephanie. You know, but like, for the, you know, even though you don't have that, you know, even though the school's, let's say, not open, or the buses are not running, we're still paying.
It'd be nice to have the full savings of that.
Oh, it would, but I, I just want to make sure that people at home, the community understands that that's not a savings, because we are still paying that. Did we cover everything that everybody wanted to cover at this point?
I think for now.
I mean, I'm sure we will have some adjustments and changes as we go into January. Clearly, December thirty-first is still a week and a half away for people to put in retirement letters and stuff like that, so we don't have the full knowledge of those things. When's the next pension committee meeting?
I don't know.
It'll be in,
It'll be in January.
Yeah, it'll be in quarter one, just look back on.
Might be after our meeting on the nineteenth, right? Isn't it the second or third Thursday, really?
I have the twenty eighth. So that's going to be after. We make, we vote.
Maybe, Nick, we reach out to a couple people, and, or I will vote the idea, I got it.
And then, obviously, we'll probably have more clarity with the Bridgeport lawsuit thing. And, and where we are with that and with the repayment.
Yeah.
And then we'll probably have more clarity, given the fact that the MOU expires the fifteenth of January, you said?
I believe so, yes.
So we'll have to have some sort of decision or some sort of, you know, agreement, or some sort of plan of how that's going to move forward.
And we can adjust that line as needed.
There may be some savings, there may not.
Right.
You know, it depends on how that's all, you know, set up. Anybody have anything else? No, 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 there's no adjournment yet, there's new business on the agenda, but nice try. Jerry's like, okay.
I would have voted yes, Jerry.
Okay, so we will move on quickly, we only have two little things. The first up is the approval of the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two Board of Education meetings. Do I have a motion to approve those? These are all in your agenda. Thank you, Jerry. Second, Christine, any discussion on any of those? You'll notice that some are Wednesdays, and that's because of holidays, and obviously are normal Tuesdays.
Yeah, the, the two things that just jumped out, just wanted to make sure everyone was okay with doing Wednesday, September eighth, that's, you know, we usually meet after Labor Day, when the kids are back in school. There's a Jewish holiday on the Tuesday, so that's why that one's a Wednesday, so as long as we're fine with that. And then, you'll notice April only has one meeting, because the second meeting would have fallen on the Monday of April vacation.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Great, thank you, motion passes. The second item is the approval of the proposed budget transfers as presented, and Ron explained earlier. Do I have a motion to approve those budget transfers? Thank you, Nick. Second, Dave, any discussion on these? Hearing none, all in favor? All right, if we have nothing else, Jerry?
Motion to adjourn.
Do we have a second? Christine, all in favor? Thank you so much, I know it was a really long night, but we've covered a lot this evening.